Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss economic inclusion with Jacobs. Roll call please.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Underwood. Vargas. Wayne.
Present.
Sixth present.
Thank you. The information tonight is on economic inclusion and just a couple of notes for the Board members. We're going to let the presenters go all the way through the entire presentation uninterrupted and then at the end there will be plenty of time for questions. So if you could just keep track of your questions as we go through and the various slides, we have the presentation here at hand. So if we could do that, that would be great. And at this point, we'll turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Turnquist.
That's too much better, isn't it? I'm sorry. I hear Dick laughing at me, so that's... This is a project that is long overdue and I want to emphasize that it is not a project. It's a way of doing business that's going to be the way of doing business henceforth, not just for this bond, not just for the next bond, but also in day-to-day business. So that inclusion becomes a part of the lifeblood of the business of this district. No more lip service to these kinds of things. No more questions, "Do you think diversity is a good thing?" and the answer is yes, and that's good enough. We have to have a plan, we have to have processes, they have to be embedded in our business, and I promise you that what you're going to see tonight is something that is going to start us well on the way towards that significant change. We do this for three reasons. The first reason is that inclusion increases competition, and competition is good for us as the customer. The second reason is competition is good for the economy of this city. And the third reason is it's the right thing to do. And at some point, you have to do the right thing, even when it's long overdue, even when people are too comfortable with it not having been there. The people who've been working on this from Jacobs are absolute experts, and I know they're going to introduce each other, but I have to say a word about two people in particular. And that is Gabrielle Mack, Vice President of Jacobs for Economic Inclusion, and Gletha Gillespie, Consultant with Jacobs for Economic Inclusion and Supplier Diversity. These two ladies are national experts in their field. They have devoted their lives to this kind of work, and we are extremely fortunate that they have brought that to us here at OPS. I saw Gabrielle's face when I first met her, and I heard her talk, and I knew we needed her, and so I said, "Will you stay?" And there was a look of shock on her face because this is the Vice President of the company. And she says, "Well, okay." And she's been here ever since, and she continues to work on this for us. So we are deeply appreciative of that. And then when Gletha came onboard, you know, we have a good time, too. And I think those of you who have met both of them understand that. The other people I want to thank here are the members of the community for the way you have stepped up and engaged with us, and come to meetings, and given input, and listened, and allowed us to move forward with something that is so important to everybody and to the entire city. With that, I want to simply thank everyone again, the Board that has challenged us to do this, the... Now, I know it's Tony in both cases, but I'm not going to start spelling mine with a Y. At any rate, I do want to point out, as Luanne said, we're going to move through the entire presentation because it's very complex. Some of the things you'll hear in the middle of it relate to the first part, some of the things you'll hear at the end relate to the middle part, and we want to make this as cohesive as possible for everyone. But the Board members will have that chance for input and for questions at the end. And the Jacobs folks are also going to talk about, and Sharif I know also is going to talk about, ways that other people, members of the community, can also have input over the next several days. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Bilyeu, who is, his title with Jacobs is Principal, which means an entirely different thing to those of us in the Omaha Public Schools. But let's look on him as our account exec. And he wants to say a few words about another Jacobs person who has been with us over this long haul and who is in our thoughts right now.
So, most of you who've been here have met and worked very closely with Cheryl Hume. Cheryl couldn't be here tonight. She unfortunately had a death in the family. So thoughts and prayers, obviously, with her and her family. So I was asked to just kind of step up and introduce the team. I'm going to do what I can to stay out of the way, but if there's any sort of continuity issues from a lot of the pre-bond work, I can certainly help with those. So with that, I'm just going to introduce our team and turn it over to them to really run the bulk of the presentation. So from left to right mostly, and we're going to come back, you heard a little bit about Gabrielle Mack, who's our Vice President of Economic Inclusion. Mark Summer is our Program Manager, sort of responsible for running the entire program for the next five years on a day-to-day basis. Gletha Gillespie, who's a consultant with us out of Chicago, working on the economic inclusion piece. And then we have Sharif Luwaru, and I wrote this down so I get the title correct, got it off the name tag. He's Omaha Public Schools Director of Equity and Diversity. He's been working closely with us and is going to take a portion of the presentation. And just because, the real truth of the matter is Deb McClung, who most of you probably see around but don't know who she is, she's the one that kind of holds everything together very quietly in the background. So all of the Board stuff that you see in the presentations, she's very heavily involved in, and we couldn't do it without Deb. So she's going to get a little recognition because we never make her talk. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our team and try and escape to the back.
Thank you, Aaron. President Godding, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Evans. We first want to thank you for being integral into the assessment portions of the Economic Inclusion Program development. That's a key step in the initial stages. We also want to thank all the community who provided very clear, transparent communication, which is absolutely necessary in creating a program that's going to be, have a lot of content, be sustainable, and provide a lot of value and growth opportunities. Also want to thank Dr. Turnquist. Of course, she's challenged us in a lot of ways to challenge ourselves, our staff, the community, and all the folks that we've been interacting with. So without her leadership, we truly wouldn't be where we're at. So thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead. So here's the agenda for tonight's slideshow. We're going to take about 60 minutes to go through the presentation, and we're going to cover a lot of good information. And then we also have earmarked 60 minutes at the end immediately following the presentation to answer any questions. So inside of the presentation tonight, you'll hear a lot of great information, starting with an overview of the bond program and some of the objectives that the Board set for us back in December when we met at the Board Meeting on the first. Additional items that we're going to cover, starting really with the background of the program, the development of the approach that we've been using, a lot of the processes that we've been able to integrate economic inclusion strategies in. And this is an area that really is technical. There's some additional handouts that we'll reference, but it's really a significant portion of, you know, the meat of the program. Also, some of the implementation that we've been able to do to date, and with some successes of that implementation, recommendations that we want to offer up to the Board for consideration, some next steps and timeline, and then again, we've earmarked some time at the end for some direct questions. Go ahead. So just a quick high-level view of the overall bond program dollars. And we've had a lot of conversations about the program value of $421 million, but we wanted to provide a little bit of context of how those dollars shake out. So what you have up there are the two main components that we've been focusing on utilization, which is in the design consulting business, and then also turning and broadening it into the construction component, the build side of the projects. So right now, what we have budgeted and earmarked for those components is the $29 million and the $222 million. And again, that's construction dollars and design dollars. In addition to that, there's a lot of components that make up the entire program budget. Of course, there's site acquisition that's involved, commissioning, hazardous material, and a bunch of other things. So our focus in the presentation and a lot of the process integration that we've done has really been heavily focused on the $222 million and the $29 million of possible spend. But we also know that there's opportunity in some of the remaining budget components with document reproduction, along with other things. So when we met in December, there were some very clear objectives set, so we just wanted to reflect quickly on those, as those have been kind of the guidance that we've used. You asked us to serve as liaison with the small disadvantaged business community, to be the conduit of communication, to give the small businesses a voice that we could bring back to the Board and the OPS community to identify the needs and the input that they have. You've asked us to implement the overall goals of the Economic Inclusion Program, and to really work with and assist OPS, different departments, buildings and grounds, maintenance, purchasing, operations, to really look at designing and implementing the most robust system we can while keeping it simple, too, because we don't want to overcomplicate the business strategies and the forms and the other components that we've been working on to complicate business. We want to streamline it and keep it simple. We've also, in addition to those objectives, there are a few others that were identified. And really, that's us encouraging and promoting the use of small businesses in many different aspects, from subcontractor level to supplier diversity, really to increase the number of bidders, assure there's a level playing field in that procurement process, and then promoting greater access to these projects. And you're going to hear a lot of information and process changes that we've been able to implement to really impact these three components. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Gabrielle. I think everyone's heard a lot about her, and she's going to cover the next few slides.
Thank you, Mark.
There you go.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you, Mark. In early December, I had the pleasure of coming before this Board, and I want to thank you for inviting me and Jacobs for the opportunity to be able to work with you to stand up and develop a program. That's what you asked us to do. At that time, this was our agenda. We said we were going to bring the right people. We were going to try to provide some, get some understanding about the political, social, historical context that the city is in, and that Omaha Public Schools has been involved in, and those factors and how they might impact both our design and the implementation of our program. We said that we were going to look at how and opportunities for economic inclusion and work with you to develop that program, and we had some guiding principles in order to guide our work. Next slide, please. The people that were brought, obviously it was me and my colleague Gletha. We bring probably over 60, I hate to say that sometimes, but we bring over 60 years of experience in working in supplier diversity, small minority women business development. We've dedicated our careers to this work. We feel it's important work, and it's work that has really shown benefits to all of our communities. And so we were really excited to be able to have an opportunity to work together. In addition to our partnership, we felt, and it was important to build partnerships in the community. And today, you're going to hear and see a little bit about some of those partnerships that we believe we've been able to establish over the three months that we've been working to develop this initiative. People like the North Omaha Contractors Association, the United Minority Contractors, the Midland Latino Community Development Corporation, the Empowerment Network, the City of Omaha in their Human Rights Department has partnered with us in certifications, and the Omaha Chamber of Commerce. There's many, many more that I haven't, and Gletha will talk a little bit about that later. But the one area that I really want to talk about, and you'll see more of, is our partnerships with our architects and design and engineering community. They have been extremely responsive, and we are very pleased about that. The next slide, please. We said at that time that there were some principles and philosophies that we wanted to be, make sure that we incorporated. We said we wanted to be proactive advocates. I think by the folks that are sitting in this room, you can see that we've been out there, and they have responded, and they have been our advocates in this process, and we thank them for that. We said that we wanted to bring you some best practices. Our 30 years of experience, we've been in cities around the country trying to see how projects and programs like this are implemented. We've been responsible ourselves for designing very successful programs, and we wanted to bring our experience and knowledge and lessons learned to this opportunity. We are working in a school environment, and for me, this is the first time I've actually worked this close with schools and students. And we know that the first priority, and I think Dr. Evans, I mean Mr. Evans, when we were with you, you said the first thing that you wanted to make sure is, is that we do what's right for the students of this, of the school district, and that we provide facilities that they deserve for better, you know, providing better education. And so we were looking for ways that we can incorporate student learning opportunities, and I think you're going to see that in our program. And lastly, the guiding principles, the sustainable, we wanted to build a program and do things that will, that you can build on over time, things that will change the processes, the business processes of procurement and selection. And I think you'll see that. We wanted to be creative and innovative. Well, you have to be creative and innovative when you're starting from nothing. And really, this was interesting because in my career, this is probably the first time that I have entered a community where there has not been already an infrastructure for small inclusion, business creation, and development. So we really were starting from ground zero as we approached this process. Lastly, accountability and transparency. We trust that people will be who they are, and we trust that they will come and tell us the truth, and they did. And we tried to do the same with them. We were trying to honest about where we were in the process and what we were trying to build. And I think together, we've come to a solution or some potential solutions that we believe are going to be sustainable in the end. As you know, when we arrived here to begin work, procurement and design was already in process. We were in the solicitation process. And so one of the comments that you hear a lot is that we were building the plane and trying to fly the plane at the same time. And that could not have been more true for where we were. We did not want to lose any opportunity, especially the first opportunities that came out of the bond program. And so while we were also trying to do our assessments, while we were trying to engage in our community outreach and get to know the community, read all of the historical documents, meet with all of the folks, we had projects that had to hit the street. And we had an AE community that was waiting for those opportunities. So while some of us were doing that, others of us were actually sitting in, trying to make sure that we were working to change the process of soliciting firms and evaluating and including them in the AE contracts. And we're very pleased with some of those outcomes. Our inclusion team included Gletha, Sharif, and myself, and together, we began working that information, working that process. Gletha really took a strong leadership role in the development of our approach and our program, and I'd like to turn it over to her to let her talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Well, as you know, this has been a very awesome, intense, three-month journey. The program development approach has been one that we built on transparency, being proactive and intentional. One of the things that we've heard consistently from Dr. Turnquist is that we needed to build a sustainable process, and it need to be substantive. And that led us through the way in which we did our environmental scan. We wanted to first hear from the leadership. And so we spent ample time with the Board of Education, getting their guidance and input and overall direction as to what they felt was important in building out an economic inclusion process. We also spent great time, multiple visits with OPS Administration through their procurement departments, understanding where they were, evaluating where some gaps were, and how it is that we may be able to feel that. One of the most important work that I think that has been done, I promise, when I stood up on the floor the very first time, I said that I would be the voice of the community, the feet on the street. And through working through the small diverse minority community, I've been able to understand where the barriers are, some of the challenges that they've had in having fluid contract opportunities. Gabrielle has done a fabulous job in working on the legal side to map out AE agreements, and you'll hear more about that. We've had some positive feedbacks overall, proactive approaches for onboarding the architect engineers, and they have been very excited about that work. We don't stop with the beginning. We continue the process. And so Mark and the team have been out talking with the contractors for the construction side, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in terms of some recommendations. As Gabrielle said, we started... As Gabrielle said, we started with understanding what is working well, what, some of the infrastructure in place through the City of Omaha, and you'll hear about us leading the way to drive the local vendors into the certification process. We also spent ample time in the North Omaha community and the South Omaha community, understanding where the barriers and the resources and the lack of what's needed to pull through the underserved in those demographics. Some of the organizations that we've dealt with, they're on the right side here. We want to make special note to the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce through Wensley Duran, who is not here today. He's been a real scholar for us in helping us to understand the voice of the community and some of the things that he's experienced through that relationship at the chamber. Next slide. So they say a picture says a thousand words, and so on this picture, this graph, what we tried to do is to be able to demonstrate to you all the different stakeholders and community partners that are necessary, that are, that have a similar interest for economic inclusion. And so, you will see here, prime contractors, you'll see faith-based organizations, you'll see the Board of Education, you see advocacy groups, you will see resource groups, but what's interesting about this is that through our experience, we see that there is a void and really a champion to mentor and to coordinate all of the efforts that are necessary to make this an effective process for the community. The next slide here, we have community engagement. Some of our work that we've done, we thank Mr. Preston Love for the quote that he had recently in Omaha Star. It says, "This is a positive movement, and it should be held up as an example of how big-ticket projects in and around North Omaha should operate using OPS Jacobs' approach as a template." We thank the work that we've been able to do and the information that we've gathered from Mr. Ron Jefferson and the members of the United Contractors Association. They have engaged with us, we've gotten great response, and now we feel like we are re-energizing hope. So, what I'd like to do now is turn the mic over to Sharif Larahu, who is the Director, Office of Equity and Diversity, to talk about community engagement impacts.
Thank you. So, for the community engagement element, important to me, being the OPS employee involved with the inclusion team, is looking at both the longevity of how this was put into place in a way that would be sustainable, that this would continue beyond the bond project, but also would go deeper than what was listed in a particular contract or element. We wanted this to be real. And so, coming from the community before starting with the district and being involved in the strategic planning as a community person, and then now with the district as an implementer, it was important for me to make sure that what was spoken of in the community was being actualized. And what we found is that our community engagement has had a serious positive impact in this particular process. So we don't only just have an involved community, but also a supportive community that's looking forward to our success in this particular effort. And because they want us to be successful, that has helped out with the communication efforts in getting the information that we need to be successful. In this way, in having the open communication, we're reaching out, we're going to places where the community members are and the stakeholders are, we've been able to build a really strong trusting relationship, and that's between the district and the contracting community as well as from the contracting community to us. That level of engagement is meaningful for us because as we are moving forward in this particular process, we can't find everyone that's out there. We won't know who's all out there, but when they have an open process, and we know where to find the community members, and they know where our information is posted when we have opportunities, they know that they can come to those sources, and we can get the increased engagement. So we're having people come to the table who had not before because of the fact that that trust there, they know that we are sincere about the efforts to include a diverse population. As it states there, the transparent two-way communication improves our external district communication with all stakeholders. There's a lot of places in which we posted information previously. We still continue to do that, but we're looking at new creative places that we can promote what we do and what's available for our community to take advantage of. And then, finally, the developing the networks that strategically work together in support of the students and families through economic inclusion really catalyzed when we started working with networks of organizations. And when we work with those networks of organizations that we give information to, and they're able to disseminate that information out, and then we are also turning to those same networks for bringing information into us. And so, we've had representation. On the next slide, it shows a quote from really Barney with the Empowerment Network. And of course, you're familiar with the Empowerment Network. A few slides back, you saw all of those key stakeholders around what we want to do with the economic inclusion. The Empowerment Network is structured in such a way that it allows it to be connected with nonprofit organizations, philanthropists, the business community, the faith-based community. And so, this comment here is really important, and usually, I don't read from the slides, but it speaks directly to what we spoke about in the beginning of what we wanted to do as an inclusion team, and as we talked about, well, how do we know that we've accomplished this? And we spoke that, well, when we hear back from the community, this type of things that we are intending to put forward, that means we've actually accomplished that. He states here, "I've been thoroughly impressed with the work of Gabrielle and Gleetha and the Jacobs team based on what I've witnessed firsthand with the planning, outreach, and engagement. The OPS Bond Program is creating a template that will be used for other large and small economic development initiatives in Omaha. The key will be to integrate their findings, recommendations, and process, not only in the bond initiative, but every aspect of contracting, procurement, and employment at OPS for long-term sustainability. That goal is ours. With this intentional, focused, and transparent work, OPS has the opportunity to lead the way in addressing poverty and unemployment, which directly impacts so many of the students and families that make up the majority of the school district. We are committed to working with Jacobs and OPS throughout this process to generate measurable outcomes in the area of economic inclusion." And as I mentioned, this is what we set out to do, and so we were glad to be able to hear that from someone in the community who's touched so many folks. Measurable outcomes for us, we recognize, can only come from really process integration. How do we integrate a process that allows us to be able to make that successful? So Gabrielle will show you what we've done in regards of process integration.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Sharif. In order to change outcomes, we must change process, or at least components of that process to get the results that we really desire. We must intentionally articulate our values, our desires, and our goals around economic inclusion, and tell those that are working with us, for us, looking to do business with us, that these are things that we want them to embrace as they come and engage with us in financial and business transactions. It's something that's done all over the country, this is not anything new, and we should be proud to be able to put forth and articulate that. That's something that we have begun to do, working together with both OPS staff and the program management team. We have started to put together the kinds of processes and documents that really exemplify the intent that the board asked us to begin to initiate in the economic inclusion program. I think one of the things that I've learned early in my career that really caused a lot of success is I've been able to take kind of the social economic language and translate that into kind of the contract documents, the engineeries, the scope, budget, and level of effort. And I think that's been helpful as we've begun to have an integrative process. I'd like to, this is the part of the workshop that we're going to ask you if you'd like to delve a little bit more into what we're trying to do, is to look at some of the documents that we have done to really institutionalize inclusion in the way that we do business. The first one is under one, your tab one. This is just a general information document. Many of the firms in the audience that either were architectural engineers firms or contractors is something that we put together to share with them just that. I mean, one of the things that I would like to talk about specifically is the three areas that we use to guide and focus the direction of our economic inclusion. Some of them are quantitative, and some of the other ones are qualitative. So, the three areas are, we said initially, because this is what our scope of work was, is to promote the development and utilization of small and disadvantaged business enterprises as consultants, contractors, subcontractors, and suppliers. That is our first goal. Our second goal is to promote or to work with the district to promote local hiring and workforce development, particularly in STEM and construction-related professions for diverse and underrepresented individuals in the OPS district. And third, we want to promote student development by partnering with the professional consultant and construction contractor community to provide learning and career opportunities. And I think that's what we've done. Next slide, please. Process integration. The second piece, and I think this really gets to the heart of the selection process, and for those in the audience, I wanted you to see some of the things that the board is looking at. And so, there you have many of the questions we are now asking our architects and engineers, and soon, our construction managers and construction managers at risk and contractors, the kinds of questions that really we believe will drive behavior and change in how they interact with us. For the board, it's under tab two, you will see an example of a recent request for proposal. And so, most of the information there is, as it is, our counsel, legal counsel, worked with us to make sure that we were on sound legal ground here, but we added an attachment, and on the third page of that RFP, on number six, you will see that we have an attachment called Guidance for Professional Consultants in Preparing Economic Inclusion Plans and Responding to the RFP for the bond program. And the next page, or if you go to the end of that document, you will see that attachment. It's on page six and seven. And I think that just reading through it, which several of the questions that are on the board are addressed, also show you the level of detail that we help to, help our architects and engineers understand what kinds of behaviors, what kinds of values we have, and they have to answer these questions, provide a plan to us, and that plan is scored and evaluated. It's a selection-based process, and now we are making economic inclusion a part of that. The other change that we have been able to integrate is somebody from the economic inclusion team sits on most of the evaluation committees. And so, we are there to help guide the discussion around expectation, and also, not necessarily to be punitive, but to really help the consultant community understand what we want. This is something very new to them, and I'll tell you, and I'll get into some of it a little later, but I am just totally surprised and encouraged by the response that we have gotten from our AE community. They have stepped up, they have made real contributions to this process, and you will see some of the results as we move forward. We move from the request for proposal process, once we negotiate with an architect, the selected architect or architectural firm, we go into contract negotiations and contract execution. And one of the things that I have learned in my career, if it's not in the contract, you can forget it. And so, we have to be intentional, and having this language in our contracts makes it real, it makes it accountable, it makes it transparent, and it's something that we can, we can measure and monitor over time. I skipped the, what is it, tab three, which was an evaluation criteria, so you see that it is also evaluating the small and disadvantaged business participation. Under section four, the architectural engineering, these are just an example, and if you turn the page for us, next slide. This really speaks to how we change the discussion and the partnership with our AE firms. There's really three areas of accountability here. We're asking the architects, or the contractor, the architects, to designate a representative who will be responsible for delivering and the implementation of their economic inclusion program. We ask them also to make, and our project managers as well, to make economic inclusion an agenda item for every progress meeting, so that we are looking at it, we are learning from each other, we are understanding, and we're making sure that what has been asked and committed to actually gets done throughout the project delivery process. And finally, it allows us to coordinate with the owner to ensure that we are getting what we ask for. Next slide. This is, this is, I guess, one of the things that I really want to share with you. I'm not going to read it because I think all of you, most of you, I hope, in the audience can read it, and if not, we'll, we'll provide it to you. But we were really unsure about the reception that we were going to get. This is something very new, it's never been tried before, we didn't know if we were going to get pushback. But when you read, and when we see the examples of commitment that our architects and engineers made to this process, I am very, very proud. We are changing behavior, we're changing the way that people are doing business, they are looking beyond just our projects. I've had consultants come to us and say, "Where else can we look for opportunities?" So they're looking at printing, they're looking at their business services, they're looking at their courier services, they're looking at other services within the scope of running a business and asking us, "Where are the small and diverse businesses?" So it's, what's happening is people are asking that question, and we're looking, and we've got small and disadvantaged businesses who are rising to the occasion to meet that. And so, that's changing the, I think, the environment. Next, I want to call attention to Exhibit C. Exhibit C is, can be found under tab five. One of the things that we do in the agreement is, is we have deliverables. Every contract has a set of deliverables that we expect at each phase of the project. In the design project, we have, program, we have a design schematic phase, we have a design development phase, and we have a construction phase. And in each phase, as you see on these documents, there's a set of deliverables, general deliverables, site drawings, architectural drawings. Well, we felt that it was important to also have a set of deliverables around economic inclusion. And you will see, highlighted in yellow at the end of that section, the deliverables for the architects at each stage. And that's, I mean, they include everything from the plan that they have to start at the beginning, invoicing the amount of dollars that are going to small and disadvantaged businesses with each pay application, and so forth and so on. This is institutionalizing it, and it means that this is something that we all are going to be looking at on a monthly basis or a periodic basis to ensure that we're getting what we're asking for. One of the things I'd like to point out is, the architects represent a lot of the work in this process, and they do a lot of the preliminary estimates and looking at the various components of the project. There's no better place than for us to begin to look at that process or have them work with us because they're designing it, to look at the quantities, the labor required, and begin helping us understand what kind of construction contract packaging and procurement opportunities that we will have during that process. So we intend to have a workshop, and we will work with each of the designers to make sure that we're looking into the construction early enough to give the small business community an opportunity to prepare for the construction phase. Next slide. Well, we've been spending a lot of time on architects and design process because that's where we find ourselves. We are now beginning to move into the construction phase. So the same kinds of integration in documents, processes, and outreach, because outreach has been a big component of this, we are planning now, and we're working now together to begin on the construction piece. We're looking at construction management at risk and integrating the same kinds of language in all of the phases and in the GC documents. And we're having a lot of input from that community, and what else are the next steps I'm looking here? Oh, the networking piece is so important because what we're finding as we're going into the community is there is a big disconnect between the prime construction community and what, who's really available. And at this point, because there's been a lot, many years of no inclusion because of the constitutional amendment, people have really basically opted out of the process. But now, we're starting to see there are many more out there, we're encouraging them to get certi- get certified, and we're also being a facilitator, introducing primes and subs together so that they can build those business relationships for the construction phase. Next slide. Now it's the part that I like to talk about, is the, is some of the successes that we've The plans, we had put a 7% goal on it. Most or several of the firms not only met, some of them exceeded the 7% goal. They've been proactive, the AE firms have been proactive in sourcing firms, they've come to almost every single one of our outreach events, we've had workshops, we've had one-on-one orientations, they have been engaged, they have been involved, they have gone to community events. We have some new subcontractors that have never worked on our projects before, that are now working on our projects. And we're having some new hires, just as a result of the workforce component. The last time I looked, we had over four commitments for new hires, for internships for all the AE companies, between all the AE companies. So that's four more new positions that will be developed as a result of our efforts here. And then the learning opportunities. There were so many. Gleetha, I don't know if you remember some of the more important ones that we think that were just wonderful, but we've had every one of our consultants interested in working with the principals, working with the schools that they've been assigned, to really engage in student learning opportunities. Everything from providing financial scholarships to using their project as a learning laboratory. And you'll hear more about some of those examples later. Laura Alley is here with us today, and this is one of the quotes that she said. She said, "Our firm is a first-generation firm, and we're delighted to be selected to work with OPS and to actively usher in a new era of inclusion. We will do our part to seek out qualified SDBE vendors and bring them to our team." And that is just an example of the kind of response that we have been getting from almost all of the AE firms that we've been working with. And so we're excited about that. I lost my place here. Oh. This is a success story that we believe has truly been wonderful. I've got a chance to meet Ms. Linda Williams, who's the CEO of Shotgun House Designers, and she's with us here today. When I met Linda, Linda was looking for work. She needed work. She was, she's a historic preservation architect, and really has been involved in North Omaha, trying to make sure that we save those buildings with real architectural integrity, and make sure there's a process for that. And I was so impressed with her, but she really hadn't done any work with OPS. I'd like to tell you that today she's on two different architectural contracts, so she went from not having any work to being fully billable, I think, utilized in this process. And what's even more exciting is because of the way that she's responded and they've responded to her, she's actually looking at hiring an intern, and possibly, we hope, with enough work, she can hire another full-time architect to really grow her firm. And that's really what this is about. It's about building capacity and capability, and we've got to do it one firm at a time. As they come up and stand up and, you know, present themselves ready, willing, and able, we have got to reduce the barriers that are traditional in this process, and then help them be successful. I think in that, as you can see, it creates job creation, because history and the statistics will tell you that minority businesses hire minority individuals from their community. And so in that way, we also get diversity in the industry. The other thing I'd like to just say is that the AE community has been so excited about this, they want to have a round table, they want to share best practices, not only for OPS, but they want to take that into their industry and work, and try to bring in some of the trade organizations like Construction CSI and the Design Build Institutes and different folks like that, to really try to coordinate that. And last but not least, there's a real interest in working with the STEM and STEAM issues, and so we're looking at trying to use that round table and try to see how we can work with the OPS curriculum development and others to get them connected. So we're not going to be in charge of that, but we think that that is something, a really wonderful opportunity for OPS to take on, and I think we started the conversation, and there's some real resources out there. And it's really all about relationships. I think that was our approach from the beginning. We're building relationships, and these relationships are bringing value to the team, and I think ultimately will bring value to OPS. Next slide. So that's a lot of the, some of the process integration with regards to those documents, but we really have to have compliance. And I'd like to turn it over to Gleetha to talk about some of the tools that we're dealing, that we've created and working with to make sure that what we promise and what people promise actually gets done.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Push the button. Okay, the button's on. I'm on. All right. So yes, those things that we believe are important, it is so critical that we measure that. I think you've heard so many times that we are building the plane as we're flying it. Well, how do you do that? So you build that from lessons learned. So as we learned the lesson, we built the dashboard. We heard from the Board of Education saying that we want measurable results. We want you to be able to demonstrate how you're going to document that what you're putting in place is actually, there's a compliance model to that. And so under the tab of number six, what we've done is we've created the Economic Inclusion Scorecard, which is a document that each firm is obligated to complete during their contracting process and turn in to us for review, documenting exactly what it is that they plan to do to demonstrate that they're going to comply with the request. We talked about building a partnership. If we're building a partnership, we, as Jacobs, OPS, bring resources as well. So on the left navigation, we gave them examples of things that we've done in terms of activities and key deliverables that drive results, and we've asked them to demonstrate that back to us. One of the firms that's listed in the presentation is Ken Han and Associates, is an architect. And again, you know, when we started this, we thought, well, architects basically sell their intellectual property, so how is it that they're going to actually be able to drill down and support economic development? We spend ample time in a one-on-one session with them, helping them to understand the difference between direct and indirect spend, quantitative and qualitative. We told them the voice from the board, the voice from the community is, if they only do student learning and workforce development, they have failed. Because Jacobs is being monitored with contracts to the community. So number one is really where the 7% expectation is in terms of the dollar value that is going back to the community. So that's what they're being measured against in terms of their goal. However, we do realize that there's rich and sweet spots in reference to these other areas, so we allow for them an opportunity to demonstrate how they will bring that value to table as well. Some of the results of the Ken Han and Associates, they have decided and have signed contracts with a Native American firm, All Native Solution, to provide office supplies. Midland Messengers for Courier Service, Alvin Engineering, and Peggy Torre, that does interior design. This is just one example of direct spend and how that's going to mirror the community and bring jobs and subcontracting opportunities direct for this OPS bond. And as Gabrielle said, there are several, several examples of what they're doing in the target area, too, and a host of area opportunities for student learning. We're very proud of the accomplishments. We feel that we have key performance indicators and a dashboard that now we can say to the contracting community, if the AEs can do it, we know that the contractors can do it. So we're furious, and we believe that with this, too, we'll be able to demonstrate, report out consistently the results that you will be proud of. So the other tool that we have created for process integration is a vendor intake form. Why is this so critically important? This is under tab number seven. This form was created so that we could monitor the success of what we created in terms of our outreach, in terms of our networking, in terms of our teaming and partnership. One of the first things that we will hear from the contracting community, and we're going down the pathway here, is that we don't know where they are, we don't know who they are, we don't know what they do, we don't know where they're at. So with this tool, and us collecting this information, we will be able to provide those primes with this document, broken out by division, and we will say, if you're looking for paint and patch, we got that. You're looking for curb and gutter, we got that. If you're looking for heating and cooling, we got that. And so we're beating the pavement, networking, asking that the various community vendors enroll in this, and everybody that's out there know that I have preached this, and I told them not coming back until you all turn these forms in, and they're coming in. Right now, we have over 400 contacts. Our goal is to disseminate this, and this is what I'll be doing much of next week, disseminating this in a way so that we can give this document to the primes and ask that they would spend time with these subs, get to know them, understand what products and services that they provide, understand what their capabilities are. We're not qualifying based on this, we're giving this as a resource. We're very proud of the community that is complying with this. We're also driving the community to a compliance measure for certification. We are not going to certify, we don't have the resources, we don't have the time, the city is doing it, it's absolutely free, and so no exception. I'm saying you've got to go get certified, and if you're not, well, I don't know. But the certifications, as we've heard from Mickey Frost, we met with yesterday, her certification processes are increasing, and we expect to blow that off the roof real soon here, as we take every contact that we have and drive them right into that process. And so this is something, again, that we can be proud of. The other document that I want you to be very proud of really goes back to results. And so we're going to have results. And one of the documents that we're going to constantly be able to share with you is the Communication Plan. There is a 2014 Bond Communication Plan that is already established. Sharif, Gabrielle, and myself worked on the plan. The Bond Communication Plan will serve as a guide to help OPS and Jacobs staff communicate effectively internally and externally with stakeholders regarding the 2014 Capital Facilities Bond Program. It will serve as a communication effort to align vision and mission of the board. And we are very proud that economic inclusion is highlighted as one of the key performance indicators there. We will have a placeholder, so if we get, as we get student learning, as we're able to document what's happening with the contractors and the subs that are coming on board, we're able to share this information, highlight it in a very valued way, to share the successes and create the buzz in the community. This information will go to community organizations, faith-based organizations. We are building out where those opportunities to tell the stories, to showcase. This is about showcasing the results, because if you have a community that's been suppressed, you surely want to be able to share some results in a way that they can be mobilized and excited about the results. This will include parents, students, and the whole entire community at large. Everyone that voted will have an opportunity to see the effects of the dollars in the community. So we are extremely excited about these two twos. We're not done, this is just the beginning. We know that we need a marketing plan, so as we come back and gather this information from you, we will have an opportunity to share with you how we're going to market our results as well. Thank you. Next. Oh. So, how does this happen? Networking meeting. Well, we have already started the process, we built the plane, we wanted to kick the tires, we wanted to test out the dashboard, we wanted to make sure that that engine would fly, and it would be sustainable according to Dr. Turnkus, and that it would be substantive. So on one day's notice, we told the AE community that we were going to host a networking session, information session, come ye, come all, here about how to get involved in the bond program. February the 12th, 2015, Economic Inclusion Workshop, right here at TacU auditorium, guess what, over 65 people came. And there were primes, there were subs, there were vendors, and there were suppliers. We are so thankful for our leader, Mark Summer, who led the training process. He was right here behind the screen with the Wi-Fi. People, as you see, were intensely engaged in understanding, as he shared, where on the web to get the information. Understand the bid schedule. We heard from the community, they tell, they don't tell us the information. We said, oh, we're going to fix that. Come and hear and know for yourself. Mark did a fabulous job of communicating the need for the partnership. Our approach is transparent, is proactive, and intentional. And guess what? This went so well that on Tuesday of this week, OPS had How to Do Business with OPS. And again, on a cause notice, we had over about 90 folks on a rainy, cold day in Omaha came out at 2:00 and participated to hear the different pathways. One pathway for the bond, another pathway for OPS. And the community now, I think, has a sense of hope and understanding of transparency, and taking responsibility for themselves to create change. And that's what's critical in this process. Get up and do it for yourself, be informed. And so we're proud of what's happened here. This event went so well, I think, I don't know who called the TV cameras, but they came out, next thing I knew, Sharif was being interviewed. I'm like, okay, I don't know. So the next, the next opportunity here, we have, I'm going back to Houston McKeel's organization, the North Omaha Contractors Association. They provided us with a statement, they said, "We would like to thank Jacobs and OPS for the role in helping North Omaha impact poverty and crime by including local contractors in the process of changing the economic void in the community. It's about 20 years overdue, and we thank you. We voted yes on the bond, our kids attend OPS, and we would love to work on some of the projects." And so that came from the NOCA Association, and we thank you for your support and your continuous interest in OPS. Next slide. So we have a Latino community that's also very concerned, ready to engage with us, and we have some Latino community leaders. Monta Sonia Ladona Magia is president and director of the Midlands of Community Development Organization. We've been networking with her. She's very excited about what's taking place, and her statement is, Jacobs is connecting Latino contractors with OPS, they are mobilizing our community, looking for opportunities for minorities. So we will continue the work between Sonia Mata and Carolyn Castilla, both have been instrumental in helping Gabrielle, and I understand the rules of engagement and how to embrace and remove barriers for Latino contractors and subs. So we've started the process, we have some results, we're drilling down it, and next step is to work with the contractors. Mark, again, has been a very instrumental leader in gathering, helping us to gather information with the general contractors. So what I'm going to do at this time is turn it over to Mark, who's going to share with you some of the results thereof. Thank you.
Thank you. As we, as we mentioned before in the presentation, a lot of the focus on the front end was based on design procurement, because frankly, that's where the bond program was. That's, that, those were the services we were trying to buy. So that, that's where a lot of the focus was, and there's a lot of good process change reflecting in that. We're now broadening that into the construction market, which we feel like is the maximum area of spend that's going to occur in the bond program through the construction dollars. So we, we are starting to engage a lot of different contractors in varying sizes and complexities. Some of them are construction managers, some of them are hard-bid general contractors, but it's very important that we understand their risks, what they perceive as challenges. In order for this program to be successful and sustainable, they have to be successful. A lot of the work that the district does inside of the bond program will be through prime contractors. So it's just, it's very important that we understand what they're seeing on their side of the business, so that way we can ensure the tools and processes that we're building will help simplify and mitigate perceived risks that they may feel they have by doing work with smaller contractors. So the contractors that we visit with, many of them have experience with mandated programs, many, many in the federal area with, work at OFIT, and a lot of the civil work that's typically federally funded. They do have experience inside of those mandated programs with a documented good-faith effort. And we'll talk a little bit about that more in the recommendation section, but there is some experience in different programs. some experience in, in different programs. They are engaged, they are interested in creating solutions. They, they've identified some challenges that we'll talk about, but some, some easy things that we can do is ensure we have good prompt payment processes. Cash flow is a critical component to small businesses, it's a critical component to most businesses, but ensuring that the folks in the field get paid on time and it, and not having it hung up with processes, or I forgot an I here, and oops, there's a T there. We want to really streamline and simplify those processes, still protect the budgets, the, the processes, and have good integrity, but there's always opportunity to continue to hone that. The other thing that we talked about then with is joint checks. And this would be applied in the sense that if a, if a small contractor needs to go out and purchase a lot of materials for a project, they don't have 50,000 of cash reserve to go out and buy that material, wait 30 days, then to be paid for it. So a lot of our prime contractors are also familiar with this joint checking strategy where they would write the check for that material on behalf of the subcontractor. So there's a lot of opportunity to leverage some of those processes that the industry's familiar with. Couple of, of the challenges that, that they've identified to us, us is the, what is known as double bonding, or what we've, we refer to as double bonding. And this is in the, with the school districts, the statutes that the school district needs to work under, all of their prime, prime contractors must be bonded. So we can't eliminate that requirement, and that really protects the risks and the projects from the financial perspective. But what we are seeking to do is identify where our prime contractors want to bond our sub, want to bond the subcontractors. Why are they doing that? Understanding their concerns about it. Some contractors just say, hey, at 250,000 and above, we bond. That's just our company practice. Others say, you know, it really depends on the risk and the relationship that we have with those entity, and these other kind of less tangible factors. So we're working with them to understand what those are and where we can identify that risk, not try to bury it in a subcontract, but bring it to the surface, so we all understand it and we're partnering with it. Again, we don't want to just leave them feeling like they're stuck trying to make a process work that isn't fundamentally sound. They've identified a concern with capacity, and what we've been talking about is their, their understanding of the unknown capacity. So through all, all of the networking and all the outreach that's been, been done, we've identified some significant capacities in, in some niche markets, and we feel like there's some immediate rewards that can be delivered from that. The other, other couple components they identified is some additional costs used to, needed to manage more of the business side. And again, this speaks to contracting and front-end documents that drive the paperwork. So what we're doing with, with the district's documentation is combing through that and really identifying, hey, this statement here, does that really bring any value? Or is it just there for process control? And if it is, if we look to soften that or eliminate it, does it create risk? And if it doesn't, let's remove it. You know, there, there's no reason to have that barrier there if it isn't there for a reason. So those are some of the things that we're doing. And then the other component was, doing outreach takes a lot. And, and I think Gabrielle and Gleetha can attest to the, to the energy and the determination it takes to really get substantive outreach. So what we're trying to do with the intake form and some of the other information is give them some focused information. If, if they identify a need in a project for carpentry services, we can help furnish and provide them some direction to go with that. Instead of them trying to connect with 400 vendors or, or contacts, we're going to try to help focus and partner up with them on some of these networking opportunities. So if we do have a, a large prime concrete contractor, we can pair them up with other small concrete contractors. So that's, those are some of the, the challenges that they've identified. The, the program here, we want it to be dynamic, we want to continue to identify challenges. There's things in the market that we don't know about today that in five months will, ooh, there's a different challenge. So a part of the program here is to make sure that it's dynamic enough to adapt. And, and it's not a, here's the program, it's a booklet, and we're just going to follow this and put it on the shelf. It's really being a dynamic, living component, and that takes continuous process integration, it takes continuous communication. So we're going to move into the, the recommendations component of this, and I will say, in some instances, we've implemented some of these. So what we're, what we're looking for is some, some good feedback and input on, we want to continue to do this. And then there's other components that, that we haven't yet been able to implement, but we want to get feedback on thoughts about implementing it. So there's a little bit of, of variance in here, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So first, in, in the recommendations, I want to set some of the stage a little bit on what you're going to hear. We really found that there's three different types of programs that typically run in the design and construction industry as it relates to economic inclusion. One is the voluntary, or good faith effort. So those are, those are typically done when there is a goal and a mandate set, there's a goal set, and the, the contractors are driven to pursue that goal. However, if they don't achieve that, they will furnish documentation that's evaluated and scored to ensure that it's not just a stack of papers, again, that's meaningless, that they're substantive, they've done what we've asked them to do. That's what a voluntary program would look like. A mandated is, you have, you, here's the goal, you have to meet it, if you don't, you're going to be found a default. You're going to, or you're going to be found non-responsive on a proposal or a bid day. So that's much more of a penalty-driven type of protocol. And then the incentive side of it, there's, there's programs out there that, that would offer some type of financial incentive to contractors that can meet and achieve the goals that are determined. That might look like at a graduated scale and various structures. Next one, please. So I, I mentioned the financial incentive on the previous slide. This is, what we're recommending in regards to that is to really study that additionally and identify some potential structures that that would work in. We know that we need to make certain that we have good established goals. Without a goal, we're, we're just kind of all moving in a different direction. So we want to make sure we can communicate consistently what the goal is and where the expectations are. Capacity building for small contractors. We want to continue to work in that direction, but what we really think is, is the most important is, is having OPS join other agencies in and around the area that are, are working on this same exact issue. So there's other entities in the city and in the surrounding area really trying to focus on economic inclusion. And one of the things we mentioned back in December that's important is that we don't duplicate efforts. So what we're recommending is we, we get together with those agencies and determine, what are you working on, and how effective is that? Okay, you take that piece, the district will take this component, and, and it's more of a team approach versus everybody kind of playing tug-of-war over that same capacity. The next one there is encouraging the hiring and workforce development. In a, in a few slides, you're going to see from one of our architecture firms where that's showcased very, very well. But really, this is a, a strong pathway into business ownership, is workforce development. And, and we're going to talk a little bit more in detail further in that. And the final one that I'll talk about here is the student learning opportunities. I think what we found with most of our design firms and with the contractors that we visit with, a lot of them are already doing these opportunities. It just hasn't been showcased, and it just hasn't been communicated very well. It's, it's been done and communicated in certain circumstances, but we really want to promote the opportunities from the elementary school level all the way through. And then one of the benefits of the bond program and its, and its duration, there's opportunity to engage kiddos early in a design, and they can follow the project all the way through the build. So we, we, we don't just have a snippet of time to hurry up and try to educate and provide learning opportunity on a piece of a project, but they literally can see an entire two-year project develop from the first ed-spec meeting where there's these very high visions, down to the last, you know, nail that's put in. So very effective to be able to see the whole program. Another important component, and I think Gleetha had mentioned this, is, is about the certification process. And, and again, to reiterate, in an attempt to try to avoid duplication, we're recommending right now that the district utilize the city's certification. And this does a couple of things. We understand that there's been some feedback on that and challenges with the program, with the city's certification program. However, it is a viable program. It's, it's race and general neutral, which is what you have to have inside of the state statute. It also provides an opportunity to encourage other, again, agencies and owners in the area to use that similar certification to grow that pool of SDVE contractors. But highest of all, most important of all, it allows the SDVE contractors and vendors to get certified once. And then it gives them opportunity to have, work with many different owners on many different types of projects. So in, in the city's case, it's a free process, but additional certifications is additional paperwork, is additional submissions, it, it just can potentially complicate things. So we think there's a significant value in allowing the vendors to certify one time and then opening up the door to a lot of different avenues of work. The, the, and I'll speed up a little bit, I know we're running short on time. The, the other components, again, is utilizing the professional service selection processes as Gabrielle outlined for the CMRs, the construction managers at risk. We talked about the, the goal, requiring a documented good faith effort, and we're still determining exactly how to evaluate and rank that kind of information. Gabrielle and Gleetha have a lot of experience in that, we're still developing the, the components of what that might look like. And then the other thing from a mandatory perspective, to get to this blended model we're talking about, is, is mandating deliverables, not outcomes. Identifying that these documents are needed as seen in Exhibit C. And other associated components, identifying when the subcontractors are needed in the project's schedule. Identifying what commitments have been made to these small disadvantaged businesses, and then on the reporting side of the payment, making sure that that's been done. So what we're, what we're recommending is more of a blended model, it's not one of any of them, it's the best pieces of all of them. The, an additional recommendation we're making is to form this multi-discipline economic inclusion team made up of, of these individuals identified on the screen. And as I mentioned before, the, the program's going to be dynamic. There's going to be challenges in the future that a, a body's going to need to be able to provide direction and guidance on, and continuing to engage other departments in the district, for example, or external resources as well. So this is a, a, a pretty critical piece. One of the things that this group will do, when we, in the design and construction realm, and we were talking about this earlier, sustainability used to be such a big deal. Oh, so difficult to do in 15, 20 years ago, how do you make a building energy efficient? Oh my gosh, can't do it. Today, that's just how business is done. And that's exactly where we're driving this program, is right now, it's how, how do we do it and processes? But the more we integrate, the more it becomes business. The, on the workforce development, again, this, this here, we believe, is a, is a significant opportunity for the district to partner up and, and leverage entities outside of themselves. We feel like most folks that come inside of the construction business or design business that become business owners, they start as a CAD technician, or they start as a laborer out in the field or an apprentice, learning the business from there up. And they eventually get to the superintendent level or project manager, and then they find out, well, wait a minute, I can do this on my own, and I can make my own money. So that, that's really where the workforce development component is, that's, it's a significant opportunity and a pathway. Again, Eileen Korth, president of Jackson and Jackson and Associates, a design firm providing services for the district, there's her quote, I'm, I'm not going to read it all, but she basically started out as an intern there back in 97, and now she's president. It is a smaller company, they provide top-quality documents, have performed services all over for the district, it's a wonderful, wonderful firm, she's a wonderful person, but that's exactly the type of stories that we're talking about, is those early opportunities to grow. And then the other thing is, for the most part, unless, unless it's measured, people do what's measured. That's a better way to say that. So we're, we're working on how to monitor compliance. And that is a direct reflection of the things that we've included in the contract and making sure that those deliverables are identified. So we've worked a lot with Bear at Home. Scott Dye's actually come into our office and done a couple workshops with our project management team to make sure that there's good, solid understanding of, here's what that means in the contract, and here's the line that we need to make sure is towed. And, and so that we're not individually making contract decisions, but we're consistently administrating, administering, sorry, the information in the contract. So that, that's a key piece. It is a required topic for all progress meetings. It's something that, you know, when we provide updates to the board, we make sure we discuss. In our CBOC meeting, it's a, it's a priority topic. So we, we're continuing to promote, discuss, and network around these opportunities. A couple other of the deliverable components, and these are a little bit more focused on the construction side, is the subcontractor's agreements. So the, the district will contract with the prime contractor, but then the prime contractor contracts with the sub. And what we're going to be asking our prime contractors to do is give us their contract. Now, we don't have a, a legal right to change their agreement, that's an agreement between two different businesses. But what we want to do is understand the contract, so whether there are complications or if we're getting feedback from the, the small contractor community that, yeah, your, your contract's great, however, in our contract, it says something different, we need to identify those things, because sometimes they do come from how the district's agreement is arranged with the prime contractor. So a very, very critical piece where, again, it's just about opening and understanding, it's not about making change, you know, you have to change your contract to say this. It's about understanding, now, why would you have it that way? Because it's creating a lot of barrier. And, well, we've just always contracted that way, well, can we work on that? And then, of course, the, the other component is ensuring that we have a good, transparent way to communicate non-compliance. And not only communicate it, but what actions are we doing to help diminish that non-compliance? So it's one thing to identify, it's another thing to help correct it. We have a couple more slides and, on some next steps, and then I think Gabrielle's going to touch a, a little bit on the timeline. So currently, again, I mentioned, we're, we're really focusing on the construction side of it, understanding all the general conditions and contracting terms, been working with OPS Legal on that. OPS is investigating and working towards hiring an economic inclusion project director. Working with OPS on, on the, the district leading the student development engagement component of the program, working hand-in-hand with that. Establishing the, the multi-disciplinary meeting, a, a team I mentioned before, but a monthly meeting to guide the implementation and ensure that it's done in the manner that is best to serve the district's inclusion goals. And then I mentioned monitoring and reporting. Currently, we have plans to do a quarterly report on the overall bond program, so this would be a component of that report, again, to make sure that we're reporting on a regular basis and celebrating successes. A couple of other next steps, really, that we're, we're, you know, Jacobs is, is committing to, is really pushing and encouraging the, the SDV community to get certified. Significant step. We continue to outreach and liaison with the small and disadvantaged businesses to advocate for, advocate for that inclusion. We are offering training and technical assistance on the systems that we use to manage the day-to-day construction business. So we have a, a system, it's online, but what we're doing to try to help the prime contractors understand that that's not going to be as big a challenge as it has been in the past, is we want to get with the subcontracting community and say, this is the system you're going to need to use. So we're going to provide that training with our team members. We, we are talking about the, the option of doing, paying invoices every two weeks. Again, really focused on cash flow, I can't stress enough how critical that is in the, in the, the small business arena, so looking at possibilities of doing that. Again, we talked about technical assistance, and, and we're, we're hiring a diverse staff. So we, we, we're not here just to talk the talk, but we're, we're walking the walk. And I think if you come into our office, you'll, you'll find that we have one of the most diverse staffs, and it's great, it's, it's a very great experience. Barbara, who's out here this evening, this is a, is a quote from her. Again, I'm not going to read it all, but Barbara comes to us with a lot of design background, so we're utilizing her talents on doing all the design reviews, and, and that's a very focused and technical process. If, you know, you see a stack of drawings that are really, really thick and a big technical spec, it takes a very keen eye to make sure that we're ultimately getting what we paid for, and it's going to be done in compliance. But she has a lot of aspirations, we're helping her grow, providing her a great opportunity, and she really wants to see this be an impactful process for, for her city. Gabrielle?
Well, we've come to the end. Thank you for indulging us. We ran over our time a little bit, and we apologize for that, but we thought it was important to get through all of this. And I think what you saw is some very committed, passionate people about this issue. I know that as, you know, I'm coming in for, to help stand up the program, that someone like Mark is the right type of person to lead the program for us in terms of leadership. And so I really appreciate the efforts. It's not just Mark, it really has been the whole team, and it's been the whole community. And I, I personally been touched, I know Gleetha and I, as we've come into this community, we just want to thank everyone for embracing us, welcoming us to your community, to your neighborhoods, to your homes, to your businesses, and we appreciate the opportunity to present. We also want you to know that this is not just the plan, this is not our plan. It's the OPS plan, it's the, your plan, and we want your input, and we encourage that, and we have designed a process for you to provide that input. We know that not everything is in there, but also, that's not all within the bond program, it's a much bigger process. And so the timeline today, we've presented kind of the basics of our plan in, in a presentation format. We are in the process of developing a document that will be available before the April 20th board meeting, which we're asking for final review and approval by the board. Over the next couple of weeks, we will have an opportunity to provide input in writing through an email. through an email website, email site that Mr. Luwaru has provided for us, so that we can really capture. We don't want to interpret your suggestions, so we just want you to give them to us in any way that you can, and we will incorporate and review them and make sure that we incorporate those ideas to the extent that's feasible into the overall plan. And so, the plan is being developed now and will continue until the 13th, which we plan to publish it for final review. Now, I think, is there any other issues, Dr. Turnquist, in terms of the timeline? Oh, on your agenda form, if you haven't picked one up, there is the email address, equityanddiversity@ops.org. And if you would put "economic inclusion" in the subject line, we will know to capture all of those for review. And we also would like to extend an invitation to anyone who would like to make public comment on what we've delivered, or to us personally, or, you know, through our office to do so. It is a plan that's in process, and we look forward to the board's questions.
Right. Thank you so much. That was great. You gave us a lot of information, and thank you for all the effort you put into the presentation. I appreciate that, as well as the rest of the board. At this time, we'll open it up for questions from board members, any that you might have. Okay, well, Ms. Williams?
I don't have a question, as of yet, and if I do, I will be sure to give those to you. But I just want to thank you. I've heard so many great things from the community and from folks that really have been wanting something of this stature to come into our community. So, I just want to thank you for the work that you've done, because you didn't have to do this much. I mean, you've gone out and you've really become a part of our community, and I think that, you know, me personally, I just want to thank you all, from Sharif, all the way down to Dr. Turnquist. This is very exciting, and although it's not, you know, it's not finalized as of yet, it's a great opportunity for OPS to be leaders in our community. And that's the thing that, going to national conferences, I've bragged about, we're really leading this work for our community, and we are setting the standard very high for not just our district, but for our community and getting this type of work. So, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't thank you publicly for all of your work that you've done and all the work that you're going to continue to do. Because I, but I know that your hearts are in it for the right reasons, and I just, I've heard so many positive things that I wanted to acknowledge those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I want to share a bit of a personal story as well. I invited Mark Summer and Mark Warner Key to attend a PTO, PTA meeting at one of the schools that will be getting work in my sub-district. And so, I think what really hits home to me is, this isn't just on paper, because really, we were there to talk about timing and questions that parents might have, and this just became a part of the discussion. And so, it shows me that it's being integrated without any effort, as far as, you know, making it formal. It was just a part of the conversation, and to me, that was a, that was really important and really beneficial to see. So, what I think we'll just do quickly is go around the table. We'll start with Mr. Wayne, and if there's anything specific that we have, that you have a question on or comment regarding something that we want to see before you come back on the 20th, let's just go around and see if there's anything that anybody specifically has.
Yeah, I have a question or two. Is, on slide 20, or 30, I can't tell, 25, you said combined SBE, 7% goal applied to AE, GC, and CRM. Is that out of the 22 million that we're looking at the 7%? Or is that out of the 421 million? What are we basing the 7%?
It's on whatever the contract opportunities right now. It's the design is, what, 29 million? And can we get to that slide where we had the first slide early? It's the very early slide. It's the construction value. I think it's 222 million of construction. It's the 29 million in design, and it's all the rest of those other opportunities that are in there. Like, for instance, if you're purchasing land, there probably is not going to be an opportunity. There may be, I mean, you know, depending if you use a real estate broker that, you know, or there, to help purchase that, but I don't know what that process is, but, oh, there it is, to pipe pit fixtures, furniture, equipment, those kinds of things, that we're going to also be looking at sourcing small and putting goals if they're going out for a contract opportunity.
So, we don't know if the 7 million's off of the 421?
It's off of wherever the opportunity is.
Well, that's where I'm slightly confused, and I'll take PANKA, for example. PANKA, I've seen three different budgets, and I kind of figured out where they're going now. The budget we told the community when we sold the bond was 434,327,000. The construction budget is around 2,500,000. So, there's about 1.5 million, 2 million, really, that is nonexistent in the, in the package. So, I'm trying to figure out, when I'm looking at all these documents, where's the 2 million at? And is that a part of the 7%? Because...
Yeah. A portion of that is, because I think what you're looking at is the program budget of $4.3 million. And there's, I don't know the project budget off the top of my head, but there is a project budget, which would include AE Design Services, which would be part of that 29 million. And then, the 2.5 million number you referenced, I believe, is construction. So, the, the sum of the 7% would be inside of that. It'd be on the 2.5 million, that's construction. And then, addition, there's a design budget inside of the overall budget.
Right. And that's where I'm confused, because the design budget right there is 29 million, but the design budget on the CBAC committee is 87 million.
What's on the CBAC report is the value of the projects in design, not a design budget. So, I think if you're referencing the report by phase, maybe, that shows you currently total project value for projects that are in design is 89 million. It's not a budget for, of 89 million to spend on design.
Well, and I get that, and I'm trying to sort through all this. I'm just trying to figure out, when we say our goal is 7%, I want to make sure what we know 7% of our goal is. Is it the 421, or is it 222? Because that's a difference of about 15 million that can go to economic inclusion, and I think that's critical. So, whatever plan, we come back in April.
Absolutely.
I need to know, because I'll use Northwest. Northwest, what we told the voters was it was 15.9. Then, the program budget outlined in the document, the total program budget is 11.38, but the construction budget is 8.9. So, even from the program, total program budget, to what we told the voters, there's a difference of $4 million. Again, 7% of $4 million is something that a small minority business could use to grow. So, I need to know, what is the 7% going to be from?
Well, absolutely. We'll make sure that that's very clear in the plan.
And Mr. Wayne, just from an administrative perspective, we look, and as a practitioner, I look at wherever there's an opportunity. So, it, you know, we're in the process of being notified when there is an opportunity, whether it's design, whether it's construction, or whether it's going to be purchased. And so, at that time, internally, we have to put together our plan for that opportunity to get inclusion. And the 7%, just so you're aware, is right now, where we are, we kind of did a reasonable, we think achievable goal. It's a program-wide goal. I think we could look at a project by project. Some projects are going to lend themselves, to a greater extent, to inclusion of small and disadvantaged businesses, and others, where you might have lots of equipment or lots of other kinds of things, may not, and we may want to lower the goal. But overall, our hope is to get, at least the first year, a 7% and then evaluate it every year. If we're making that 7%, we should think about increasing it. And so, that, we would hope that a committee would, that a committee would come to you with recommendations and an annual report every year about the successes and where we are, and what our recommendations are to increase our efforts.
And I agree with all of that, but when I think of opportunities, I think of the total budget. So...
Okay.
When the slide says that the opportunity is for AE, GC, and CMR, then that leaves off 200 million of opportunity that people won't get, because that, how I'm understanding, is 222 million.
And I think we can break that down so that you can see where the, where the opportunity is as we see it for going out to the marketplace. That's where I want to make sure that we have...
And I just think the community wants to know and wants to understand that at Northwest, there's 14 million. We're talking either 14.9 or 15.9 in 7% of that, or are we talking about the 8%? Because at the end of all of this, they're going to say, well, did you meet your goal of whatever? And if it's 421 or it's 222 million, we need to know what that is. Otherwise, some of us are going to believe it's 421, and we're going to be off 15 million.
One of the things that I failed to say was a success, and we think it's really a big success, is especially since we're talking about Northwest, is that although not a small or disadvantaged business with regards to the certification, it's a large company, but we have, for the first time in a long time, a prime architect, KAI, which is an African-American-owned architecture firm, who's in town. They've established offices here, they're working on city work, and they were a successful proposer in a competitive process. And so, we're really excited that they're there. They also have a strong commitment to hire local and to use local subcontractors, and some of their subs are in the room today, and very happy to be a part of that team.
And I don't disagree with you, but the question from Madam Chair was, what would we like to see? And what I would like to see in April, and I agree, everything you guys have done is great. I haven't heard negativity in the community. People are excited.
Thank you.
But I'm, I'm just concerned, when we say 7%, what does that mean?
And we'll break that down for you. Thank you for that.
I wonder if it would be possible, based on your question, as you said, as projects are biddable, or however it's broken, if maybe we could kind of have those in a running total, so that we can see, okay, this, this project, for instance, land acquisition, it may or may not be possible, so, then that doesn't become a part of the total, so that we can kind of see that going as, in a running total, as the bids? And I don't think...
Project by project basis.
Project by project, sorry.
Correct.
I was trying to figure out what the right...
No, that's okay.
What the right term was. But I'm wondering if we could do it that way, and then, that way, we can actually be measuring, because I understand what you're saying, sometimes, maybe it won't be quite seven, but we may have projects where it's significantly greater than that, like, you know, maybe the Northwest project would be one of those. So, that may help us to see where we're at and what was possible.
Absolutely. And I think also, I've seen many boards, when they have contracts come for award, I think it's significant for you to ask that information. And when you get it, that, I think it tells the community that the board is very serious about these commitments, and if they don't meet them, then, you know, I think you'll begin to see who's meeting them and who's not. And maybe that'll tell us a little bit about what we need to do to further, further our efforts.
That's great. And do you have another question?
Well, and I just, I think generally speaking, since we have Jacobs here, that we have to have a, like, PANKA parents are calling me now, Northwest, because there is two different numbers being floated out there between what they voted on for their school and what the construction project is versus what the total project is. And what's confusing is, like I said, at PANKA, there's three different numbers. I'm able to figure out what the construction project is, but there's still a million dollars gone, at least from the project budget, to now. And I thought it was communications or fire, life, and safety, but when I look at that, even the schools who only get that, there's still a difference. So, parents are saying, well, you know, is PANKA getting four? Or is PANKA only getting two plus the design fee, which is three? So, we need to have a clearer communication on, overall, what that is. Thank you.
If you don't have an answer, that's fine. We'll come back, you know, we'll get that back to you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Scanlon?
I'd just like to say thank you. This economic inclusion goes well above and beyond anything. I've been in the construction industry for a while, and I've, the DBE and trying to promote small disadvantaged businesses is, is something on the state level that I've been familiar with, but this goes well beyond anything I've ever seen. I've never, never heard of one that is looking at workforce development, student learning, and educational development. I think that that's just, those two pieces are, are something that is very, that will be very beneficial to the Omaha area, and I really am excited to see that that's a part of our plan. I guess, one thing I'd just like to mention to the board, that while the economic inclusion, you know, that part is very important, we do have to remember that as firms come and they get qualified, that gets their foot in the door, but we still have to make sure that they perform at an industry standard level and that we're not sacrificing quality and we're expecting industry standards across the board. That's just something that, we can't sacrifice the quality of our projects, and I'm sure that that shouldn't be a problem, that the prime contractors and everybody will hold their subcontractors accountable to a high-quality of standard. I guess, just a couple of things that I thought were very, very important as a small business aspect is the, and I'd like to hear more information the next time we come, is the prompt payments. That's in a lot of contracts, and that means a lot of different things. And being a small business, prompt is a wide definition, and having it every two weeks, I think that's, that's something that could help the small businesses, because obtaining credit can be very difficult. And also, the joint checks, some of those large dollar amounts that suppliers or subs have to buy, it would be nice to find out ways that you guys are looking to help prevent the subcontractor or the supplier to finance that until they do receive payments. So, I think those are two, two parts that would help the small businesses, DBEs, compete a little better. Thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, I'm a little bit under the weather today. I've had three bags of holes, which I think is not good for my health. I want to thank you guys for presenting today. I know it's kind of difficult to come in and start something from scratch, especially when you have a city that is struggling to come up with their own program, and you have other projects that are, really haven't gotten off the ground. Just have a couple questions. The first question kind of stems from that 7% goal that we, that was established. What was the criteria? How did we get up with that number? If you can explain that to me, because if I'm correct, the city's goal was 10%. Is that correct? I'm just, how did we get to the 7% goal?
I'll be honest with this. We looked at, actually initially, two different goals, one for small business, one for disadvantaged business. But with such a small number that's currently certified and looking at the pool of certified firms, we really needed to, I guess, put something that's more, I would say, reasonable. In most communities, I'm used to seeing goals of 15 and 20, 30% in large urban areas. However, we just don't have the foundation and base that we can draw on based on our, based on our need to do a race and gender-neutral program. And so, to be honest with you, we were looking at a couple different goals. We said between 5 and 10, and we decided that we would start with 7 to see if the market would bear that. And quite frankly, we've, the response we've gotten so far is that it's reasonable, it's a stretch in some areas, but we're willing to work with OPS in order to meet that goal. And so, it is. If we wanted to do it the way that most folks do it, it would take about a year to do a disparity study. We would have to do an availability analysis, a capability analysis, and frankly, by that time, I think most of these opportunities would have been gone. So, we just tested the market, and we're open to hear your thoughts, and we will be willing to, based on, I think, some, you know, reasonable factual data, be willing to take direction from the board.
Thank you. I, I might be wrong, but I thought there was a study that was done for the greater Omaha area by the government, federal government. I think they came to 14%. But I might be wrong, but I'm sure that there was a study. Because I think the city based theirs off that study.
There were several studies that I'm aware of that was done, but they were based... There were several studies that I'm aware of that was done, but they were based on a review of minority and women businesses. And at this point in our, at this point, we just cannot use race and gender-based criteria. So, we're kind of stuck there.
Okay. So, we'll come back to that. My next question, and I just got two more really quick. You were talking about these evaluators, these scoring sheet. How are they weighted? Because if I have to come in at 7% and I don't hire any SDB contractors and I just create a student program, is that, is that student program weighted heavy or is it rated low? I mean, what is the priority on that? Because I want us to be sure, at the end of the day, that we are hiring people and putting people to work.
Absolutely.
And not just creating programs, which is great, but the initial plan of this is to put people on the ground.
And I appreciate that question because we looked at that. And for us, you've charged us, our responsibility at Jacobs, according to our contract, is that we are going to increase and promote small and disadvantaged business inclusion in the bond program. It says nothing about student learning, it says nothing about workforce development. So, that is our priority. It's our number one priority, and it's weighted as such when we're doing the evaluation. And as Gleetha said earlier, you could have a great student program and you can hire an intern, but if you don't have small and disadvantaged business enterprise, your scoring will be extremely low. And so, we're also looking at breaking down each one of those factors and scoring against the weight.
Would there be, for the next meeting, would you be able to bring like an example, not just for me, but just for the community and the board to actually see how it's weighted?
Sure, we can do that.
Because I want to feel a little bit confident if I'm going out there telling people how it's being weighted.
Thank you. We'll be happy.
I appreciate both of you being here, but we all know, the way this sounds, you guys won't be here forever.
I know I won't, but I'd love to. I'll be coming back often. I've been given permission to come back once a month to work with the team.
Given permission? No, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
So, on Slide 4, they're talking, I mean, it was talking about how Jacobs was designated an employee that would kind of oversee the program and implement the program. On Slide 33, it talks about, I think that's talking about hiring a person to, within OPS, not 33. What slide is that, actually?
You mean our recommendation?
The recommendation, Slide 36.
Well, there's the Jacobs contract.
I understand. So, you have the Jacobs contract. So, if you look at the Jacobs representative consultant, so, excuse me. What's the difference between the first person? So, how is this transition going to work if we're supposed to be hiring an inclusion project manager? What is their scope? Is it a team? Is it an individual? Is it somebody from Jacobs? How is this process going to happen? Because what I don't want it to happen, is I'm not a very good baseball player, so when my brother throws me the ball, I drop it all the time. So, if, my analogy is horrible, but in essence, I want to make sure when we pass that off, that we can continue that in good faith.
I promise we won't throw the ball to you. No, I think that's an excellent question. That's been very important. What happens after Gleetha and Gabrielle are gone? I will feel I've lost two great friends. But they'll be back. No, the plan, the plan is to post a position. That person's responsibility will be pick up that ball, catch it, and continue that work. We have assurances from Jacobs that Gleetha and Gabrielle will be helping to train that person, but it's also going to be someone who has experience and adequate credentials in order to make this move forward, to continue in the way it has begun.
And my final question, since it's going to be a director over a program, obviously there has to be a budget to it, right? At the end of the day, this person that we're hiring, I have it, I'll be honest with you, I have it, it's very difficult for me to understand that we would start off by hiring somebody internally to be for the district instead of actually contract out or have a consultant that works with us to make sure the program is running. Because if my, if my, my overall scheme of it is Jacobs, their main objective is the bond, so you need somebody to come in to make sure that this outlasts the bond and is a full program. And I think we're setting someone up for failure if we hire someone internally. That has to do with all these different individuals, as if you have a firm, they have a team, right?
Well, we are going to do a national search for this position, someone with experience and credentials. It will become an OPS employee, but Gabrielle and Gleetha will continue to consult with that person to make sure we're up and running. But it will be a person of experience in this field.
How long is your, how long is that? I mean, I want to make sure, because if this person's taken a while to come on to the district, how long is their role? I mean, that's.
How long is their role?
How long is their role with this? Because my, from my knowledge, I thought that they were coming to set something up and say, "Good luck, no offense, but it's your puppy now, give us a call when you need." But I want to make sure that, what does that transition look like?
Well, I've had that conversation with Jacobs, and I have every confidence that this is going to work and that we are going to have support, and we're going to have the consulting services that we need to make certain that exactly what you want to see happen will happen.
And I'll just jump in really quickly on your question. I think in visiting with the superintendent, he'll share with us a little bit more about that position and the job description. It won't be a new FTE, it will be a position that's being repurposed from a retirement. So, it won't be an additional dollars that will be spent out of general fund money either, but he will share with the board more details on that job description as we move along. Did you have another question, Mr. Snow?
I have some more questions later. I didn't want to take up the meeting. I can if you want. He said no, he said no.
Mr. Scanlon is voting no on that? How about we do this? How about we finish up, and then we'll come back to you, and then?
The meeting, I can wait for another.
Well, what I do want, though, is I do want the folks from Jacobs to have some good direction for what we would like to see, because when they come back on the 20th, you know, we want to give the confidence to the community that we're moving forward. So, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. So, thank you. I know we all said thank you, but I'm going to say thank you as well. This is not my area of expertise, and seeing the amount of efforts you've been making is both commendable, and I'm looking forward to the continued partnership. Just a couple of questions. I think it's along the lines of the same 7% number. I know you mentioned 15% is something, 15 to 20% goal for SDB is something you've seen in other cities or other projects you've worked in. And then you mentioned that part of the 7% came from looking at the existing certification numbers of people, organizations that are certified locally, and using that to determine what's both ambitious and feasible. And that's where the number came from. Would be really helpful, both for the public and myself, is to see the numbers, the certification numbers you're referencing that led you to the 7%. This way, it tells us, you know, what are the percent of currently certified SBE and DBE organizations in the city? That, then we can create, make that translation for why 7% is actually ambitious and feasible for our city. And it even, I don't know if you can do this, I don't know the extent to which you can do this, but seeing the breakdown by some of the different sub-areas, if possible, this way, we're, I think to your point, there's some areas where you have more people that are, more organizations that are certified than others. That's why you're doing over, across all the organizations at 7%. It's not, you know, 7% in every single, let's say, category or sub-function, but that would be really helpful for me, and I think it'd be helpful for individuals that are trying to see, well, why are we setting that percentage? The second thing that would be really helpful for me, it's both commendable, fantastic, seeing the efforts made out in North Omaha and hearing the efforts in South Omaha. You know, something that you said, I can't remember who said this, that people do what is measured, right? And I'm not sure how you measured your success for outreach. I know that one of the things that you mentioned in Slide, oh, no, I can't find it. Oh, here it is. Slide 29, economic inclusion implementation. You completed over 30 outreach activities, reaching over 200 people. For me, it'd be very helpful if you have demographic information or identity information for those organizations. This way, the public sees, you know, in my area in South Omaha, it'd be very great to see what has been the representation of the individuals in these different outreach efforts that you've made. What has outreach looked like for these organizations? How, you know, what is, what were your efforts? And then what was the outcome of your efforts? Like, what's the percentage of individuals you're seeing from different parts or communities within Omaha? That'd be very helpful.
And that probably needs to stick to small and disadvantaged businesses versus the other piece that we just talked about.
Oh, no, that's more than fine, but you could still do it by, you could still do it by zip codes. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
Yeah. That's why I'm not saying Latin or African-American or anything like that. But I do think that that information's going to be very helpful. We are talking about North Omaha, and I want to make sure that we're thinking about all of the areas in zip codes. And in North Omaha, it's also all very complex. There are many different zip codes, and I want to make sure we're representing different areas. And seeing the impact of the outreach, because I'm not sure what the measurement is, I think one of your goals that you mentioned, Gleetha, is that we are, our goal is to increase and promote inclusiveness. I think we will get that, and I'm just wondering, what, how are you holding yourself accountable in terms of outreach? What are you actually, what is measuring success? I think we have the qualitative. I want to make sure that we're able to communicate the quantitative to the community, and for all of our contractors, subcontractors, that they're seeing those efforts are actually tangible, measurable numbers that show what we've done, and not just we're doing them. I think we are doing them, but the data is really important to be able to communicate to the community. And then the last one is just around accountability. I think one of your next steps was around recommendations. Maybe we won't spend too much time on this, but you talked about recommendations for whether or not this is voluntary or contractual, right? Just, so you talked about this, people do what is measured, and to me, it seems like the contractual sort of obligated makes more sense. If we're requiring people to submit these proposals, if we're still having on the back end this voluntary, that we're not, we're not going to get the return on investment in what we expected people in their proposals, even the best of intentioned individuals, if you don't have something that creates accountability around it, you're not going to see the impact of those proposals. So, I appreciate that as the option, and would just love to see more examples of what that has looked like. So, it's not punitive, but it's more integrated into the culture of what we're trying to accomplish here, like the end game. Maybe more examples of what that plan might look like, what language looks like when we're communicating that to individuals. And then to Mr. Snow's point around the handoff with this implementation manager, the OPS person that we're going to hire, I think what would be helpful for me, piggybacking on what Mr. Snow said, is a, is a transition plan for how you're going to gradually lose responsibility. You know, at what point are responsibilities living with Jacobs, then transitioning over to our staff member? And what does that eventual transition of roles and responsibilities look like? And at what point is like the end game, where you're just cutting off and cutting the billboard? Yeah, so those are the things that I would love to see. And thank you.
I would like to just make one clarification, Mr. Vargas. Although they, and I agree, I think that's an excellent idea, and I think, I'm not think, I know we're going to work with Dr. Turnquist to put in a transition plan that works and is in the best interest of OPS. But I don't want you to think that we're going to drop it. It's a commitment that we have, and even within the bond program, within the contracts that we are being held responsible for, we will continue that effort. It may not be as visible in terms of my being here, but we will have transition. And I've got every confidence that my team, starting with Mark Summers, our design manager, Barbara Ingram, who has a heart for this community, understands this, but is going to be in a leadership position. And frankly, the people who've been working with us, Steve Selting, I think you've met, our design manager, all of them have been really incredible to work with, and we've changed even their understanding of the program, and they have really bought in and are going to be intricate part of making sure this happens. And that's one thing I want to make sure everyone knows, it's not one person's responsibility. Everyone has a responsibility in our, in this organization, in our organization, and in the contracting community organization to play their part. Without it, it's not going to work. So, we're going to continue our commitment, and we look forward to demonstrating that over the next couple of years.
And I would just like to add, Mr. Vargas, I appreciate very much your comments about that mentoring or transition plan. And to assure you, I've never hired anybody, including a secretary or an ed tech, without a mentoring and transition plan. That's extremely important.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just, it's not that we don't do it, or not that we think it's a best practice, but I think in the spirit of this work, we're asking companies, contractors, engineers, architects, to submit plans that show their commitment to economic inclusion. And I don't want plans to just be plans, I want these to be living documents. I think it's a good, it is, it is important for us, OPS, and then also Jacobs, that we are shedding light on how the work that we're doing and the planning and the devil in the details is actually what it looks like. This way, we're also modeling that for companies and what it looks like to do that, so that they're not just creating proposals and then they're not then living out in the way that we intend them to be. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
I'm just going around. Ms. Merrick, if I can get my mic on. I do have a couple of things. I wanted to echo the thank you that everyone has said, but especially thank you guys for the opportunities you gave us as board members to meet with you individually and in small groups, to talk about the concerns we had specific to our communities and the areas that we represent. And I'm glad that you included in your best practices on one of the last slides about having the networking sessions. Because I think the thing I expressed that I was most concerned about is I don't want to see our district create workforce development and create job opportunities that aren't sustainable, that people aren't going to have going forward. And I think there's so many big projects going on in Omaha that having that networking is going to be crucial to making connections and keeping people going forward. I did have one question, it's kind of funny, this is the slide that I was going to ask I want to, I have good faith in everyone that we're working with, obviously, but in instances where we do find someone not complying with what they said they were going to do, I guess, is that up for our board to decide what happens in those situations? Is that when we're adding in the voluntary mandatory pieces of the contract? Or is that us deciding to cancel a contract? Or will you have to be including that in the final?
I think there's a couple of things. It really depends on what kind of services they're providing. So, in the professional services and the construction manager arena, that's a qualifications based. So, history, work experience with the district, those kind of things are weighted. It's a little bit more difficult in the hard bid arena with where low price is the driver and the goal. But what we want to do is get that input, continue to study what mechanisms we can put in place for if there is a default of contractor non-compliance, what is, where are the district's opportunity to, again, not be punitive, but make sure that this is real. You know, it's not just give us a few pieces of paper and let's talk about a plan and, hey, let's go build something. So, part of that studying is ongoing. It's been a big part of a lot of the work that we've been doing from the technical perspective. So, we'll take that information and continue to hone it down, and in the 20th plan, we'll have some more detail of what that would look like, more structured around those types of terms in a contract.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And I also want to thank the community behind us that has come out this evening. So, thank you for being here and supporting all the work that has been happening in OPS, which is, you know, that whole effort to be transparent and inclusive. And I think it's evident this evening, and so, I want to thank you for engaging our community and really bringing something new to the table as well. What I do want to remind all board members is that you will have that email available until the 13th, is that correct? And so, I want to encourage board members to send any questions that you have, and also the community to send any questions. I wrote down the things that we talked about this evening, and as we get closer to the 20th, when Ms. Williams 20th, when Ms. Williams and I do meet with, for board officers, we'll be ensuring that these items are included in your presentation, but I just want to encourage everyone to email and Mr. Snow.
We're trying to gather all that data by the 3rd of April.
Oh, by the 3rd, okay, I'm sorry.
Because we want to try to evaluate and incorporate as much as we can, and then, right, into the actual document.
Okay.
So, again, the, the plan needs to be dynamic, and there can be adjustments, but to really gather, gather it all.
And, and give you plenty of time to get it incorporated, right?
Sure.
So, okay, so by the 3rd. So if everyone can just remember that, and, and then I'm going to let Mr. Evans make a comment, and then we'll be ready to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments. One, in reference to Lacey's comment. The reality is, and I'm not an expert either, this is my third bond issue, I guess the more experience I get, the less of an expert I think I am on anything. That's, that Stephen Covey circle of knowledge, the more you learn, the more you know you don't know everything. But one of the things that I've seen happen in, in bond issues in the past is, we will have some contractors or service providers that will be underperformers. That's going to happen. It's happened everywhere I've been, and that'll be part of what our experts in this area will have to evaluate, because we'll have some, there'll be something, and it won't necessarily be with a small, maybe it is a small developing business, maybe it's not. But we'll have somebody with some flat work that's not right. We'll have a designer that comes with something that doesn't work right. You're very familiar, I know you are, because you've done this work before. So, it, it will be something that may cause some conversations at the board level, too, because that'll come back here, especially if we've got to do redesign work, or if we've got to do some actual rework to some hard products. It does happen. I guess, I, I don't want anyone to be surprised. We're going, we will have bumps in the road. It comes with the territory, and that just is, is what we'll work through and won't be an issue. It's just, it's just part of the process. The other thing I just mentioned is, again, this is something that's a culture-changing piece for our district, and that's why we repurposed an existing FTE, it was a retiring individual, to this role. Dr. Turnquist talked to me about it and said, "We want this to not only seamlessly transition with the work that we're doing today, but we want it to be ongoing, not just with bond projects, but with other maintenance projects." We hire firms to do a lot of maintenance work in our district. We may have a sidewalk that's filled with cracks and needs to be replaced, and we want to look out and say, "Gosh, are there some other businesses that may qualify in this small and developing business that can do some flat work at school X or school Y?" I want that to be a part of how we do business. I want that to be a part of it, and I know Dr. Turnquist is committed, and I think this helps lay the groundwork using this bond issue to help say, "This is what we're going to look for in everything, in everything." And this is a district, obviously, that's so large, we're going to have maintenance projects and other things, that we want to continue reaching out to the folks that are behind me and the folks that are out in the community. So, I appreciate all the work that's going on, and again, from, from my experience, this is probably the most in-depth I've seen in my two previous districts. It was not as in-depth as we are today, so I think we're heading down the right path. I think we're going to make progress, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned at 7:39 PM.